Good evening and welcome to the City of Xenia's City Council Meeting for August the 14th, 2014. We've been in an executive session since 5:30, then had a special session to discuss the results of, or the preliminary results of Play Xenia, looking at recreational and other type venues. And now we're prepared to start our regular session. Our apologies for starting a few minutes behind. First off this evening, we will have an invocation by Pastor Mark Atherton from Xenia Nazarene Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Smith. If you would rise with me for the invocation and pledge, please.
Let's pray together, please. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beauty of your creation, the sun that we saw today, the blue skies, the evidence of your creation that makes us thankful and leaves us, as your word says, without excuse. Father, we thank you for the opportunity that you're hearing us right now with all the people around the world that are praying to you for all different reasons you are hearing us right now. We thank you for that. We thank you for these city officials and these leaders. We pray, Father, that you would give them wisdom tonight. Many times their decisions are not between the good and the bad, they're between the good and the best, and those are very difficult decisions and help them to be able to sometimes say no to the good so they can say yes to the best. And that needs your wisdom and your guidance through all of that. I pray for that. I pray for courage for them tonight as they talk through difficult topics, the courage to be able to do the right thing for the people of Xenia, the courage not just to do the political thing, or not to be able to do the thing that just pleases people, but to do the right thing for the people of Xenia. And I ask you to give them the fortitude and the courage to be able to do that. So, Father, we thank you that we can come to you and we know that you're hearing us, and we pray all these things in the only name under heaven by which we must be said, the name of the Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mark. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Atherton and Councilman Smith. May I have roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Here.
Councilman Cowt.
Here.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here.
May I have a motion, please, for approval of minutes from the July 24th, 2014 Executive and Regular Session, please?
They're moving, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterbach, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on these minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowt.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
At this time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please step to the podium, provide us your name and address. Limit your comments to three to four minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Heather Holtz. My address is 2805 Raxet Court.
And I'm Andrea Norrington. We are at 2928 West Barnhill Place.
And we're just here tonight to talk about two of the lots that are on Vimla Way when you enter Sterling Green. For the past several years, we've been kind of going through this routine every year where we call in and we complain about the two lots at the entrance. They're routinely above 10 inches as far as the grass and weeds go. And I know I've had some email correspondence with a couple of you in the last month or so, and some work was done in that area, but if you go to the back of the lot, if you're leaving Sterling Green, you go to the back of the lot, there are still weeds that are several feet tall. And then to the left-hand side, there's still some weeds that are in excess of 10 inches. So, we're really here just to find out what the move forward plan is for addressing those two lots.
Thank you very much.
And here's actually another one of our neighbors who lives adjacent to one of the lots and was also coming to discuss this.
Well, we've had, I know there are a number of issues, and I don't want to defer to Brian if he's not prepared to respond to it, but it really, since the city planners are here, I'm gonna heap it over to Brian.
Yeah, I'm Brian Forster. I think I emailed with you. I guess we'd have to take a look at it again. When we got that complaint, we immediately contacted Fisher. They did not respond. We posted the property. We ended up having our contractor go out and mow that property. It was my impression that he cut the back of it as well. That's what we specifically...
He cut it about this wide, but that area is probably about six feet deep. And I have pictures I can email you to you tomorrow. Just didn't have the means to print it off for tonight. So, where the rest of the neighbors mow up onto that, we lovingly call it the levee. You know, that's not been addressed. And then on the other side of the street, there's still a lot of brush that's in excess of 10 inches. And then really, our concern is, I know that this time it was addressed once I emailed and asked to get on the agenda, but in the past, it's taken several of us calling or emailing multiple times each summer to get the lots addressed one time. So, you know, our hope is that moving forward will stay below the 10 inches on a regular basis.
And also, sir, I'm the lot right next door. I just wanna show you the flooding. This is my backyard.
You need to state your name.
This is two and a half feet of water.
You need to state your name and address.
Okay, I actually did print off all the pictures I was gonna bring tonight, so if...
Yes, I did.
They lack your name and where your address.
My name's Tara White. I live at 1450 Vimla Way.
If you'd like to pass them...
Could you pass those around, please?
Yes. There's one of flooding. I have lots of them. Here is the one of the lot next to my house. This is the lot across the street. The following three pictures are pictures of some of the growth from the lot across the street.
And those were taken today. The ones that say current were taken this morning.
Ma'am, what do you attribute the flooding to?
Actually, I do have a picture of it. The drain is clogged.
Is this your house?
I, sir...
Are you right next to the...
I'm the one next to 262.
Okay.
So, I moved to the lot in October of 2010, and we had a lot of flooding. And I was told, yes, your lot floods when it rains. Expect floodwaters, your bottom of your backyard is unusable. So, when we moved in and built the fence, we put the playground set up on the hill. Not as safe, but we concreted it in so that it is safe for my children, but they said the bottom of the hill was unusable. Sure enough, first rain, found out, is unusable. It's about two and a half to three feet of water that stand anywhere from a day or two to a couple hours, depending on how many times I called the city and asked for my drain to be cleared.
Brian, did you say you could address that?
Yeah, I mean, is there more that you wanted to say?
I'm gonna send some more pictures around. These are the lot, the pictures of some of the growth of the lot right next to my house. And I have some more pictures of some flooding.
You don't, do you have to pay, do you have to pay flood insurance?
Actually, I was researching that before this. Unfortunately, today is Air Force Open House, so after work, I took my son to meet his teacher, so I didn't get to research it very much. But I was researching the floodplain area of where I lived, and when I purchased my house and my insurance company went over my house with my mortgage, they did say that I was not in a floodplain.
Okay.
However, recently, Ms. Holes has been emailing back and forth, and I understand that an engineer from the city came out and said that that area is to be flooded with up to five feet of water. However, if that's three, about three feet of water, five feet of water would put my house practically underwater and water into my basement.
If you was paying flood insurance, you would know it.
I'm not paying flood insurance because I'm not in a floodplain.
Okay. I was gonna say, I wanted to clear...
I did research a little bit, but I haven't verified exactly, so I could get back to you, but I have not verified.
No, no, I would just, if there's a possibility, we could get you out of the, if you was paying flood insurance, was my whole point.
Right.
I am currently not paying flood insurance. I just was looking into it to make sure that if I needed to be paying flood insurance, I did add that immediately.
No, I realize it's still a problem, but I just, that was just a curiosity question.
And that is, the last picture is the drain. When the growth of the vegetation grows so high that it's just too heavy to stand on its own any longer, it starts to sway into the drain, and that's where we get the clogged drain. So, the vegetation, the rain comes. I'm the last house within the subdivision, at the bottom of the drain, minus the lot that's next to us. So, the water from everyone else comes to the backyard, and it just takes that vegetation that's already fallen over into the drain, and it pulls it into the drain, and then it clogs it. Like I said, when we first moved in, we did have the city come out and clean it, and they actually sent a crew to literally go into the drain and take everything out. And we didn't have problems for a while until the next summer. I do have more pictures from last summer. My seven, my son is seven years old, and it was about a foot over his head, the vegetation in the backyard. So, it's a little bit daunting, as you may see, because Fisher Homes pays taxes, which is great, because that's what they're supposed to do. I also pay taxes. However, if my yard got that high, I'm sure there would have been a fine to me. And I've even actually offered to buy the lot from Fisher Homes so that I could take care of it properly. I've offered to help them get a company to come take care of the lots properly. We do have a lawn service that goes through our yard, and he's quite cheap, young college kid, just trying to get through college, and he would do it, and he's really good. Fisher Homes declined my offer, and they said they pay someone to mow the yard every week, however, it's not mowed, maybe once every couple months.
I've been to a couple of you, as homeowners association means, and Fisher Homes is a problem to our city. The city needs to play hardball with Fisher Homes.
I agree, sir.
They're not a good neighbor. They're not willing to do anything out there. So, it's time the cities stepped up to the plate and really put some pressure on Fisher Homes. By the way, if I'm not mistaken, the city ordinance is six inches, isn't it?
Ten inches, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's changed, I think, over the time that I've lived there, but it is 10 inches now.
Regardless, I know the struggles you guys have out there, and the city needs to address... Just cause Fisher Homes a big developer doesn't mean they don't have to play by the same rules everybody else in town does. And besides that, they're not even developing or marketing their lots out there. I don't even know why they own them.
I'm not sure.
But when's the last home was built out there?
When Beazer pulled out.
Exactly.
When Beazer went bankrupt. Since then, there has not been a single house built. You know, and that's our concern as well. It's also, you know, I wanted to stick to talking about the code, because I felt like that's something you have jurisdiction over, but if you also talk about just how it's affected us, our, the value of our homes decrease, really, who moves into our neighborhood? Changes in that we're getting a lot more renters now because people don't want to buy. So, you know, and we have lovely renters, but they're not families who are going to stay.
Do that in, ma'am. Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. We're glad that the city jumped on your problem quickly this time. I'm sure we will continue to do that. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Law Director, what can we do to put Fisher on notice?
Can I...
Please.
Because we, there are a couple of other things to point out. We had, as far as the drainage issue goes, we did have our engineering inspector go out and take a look at the site, and his assessment of it was that there is a retention area that is designated back there, and it is serving its function. The tall vegetation is not causing the backup. The backup is normal. It's part of the normal function of the retention area. It fills up with water and then it slowly drains. That's how a retention area works. So, it's, his assessment was that this area was doing its job. There was really no backup. There was a little bit of debris in there, and it does need to be cleaned out every now and then, but the amount of debris that was in there at the time he inspected it was not sufficient to cause any kind of backup. I think it's also important to point out that this, this area is adjacent to a wooded area. It's basically a tree row. So, it is, yes, it is a grass area, but it's a grass area adjacent to woods. So, he, our contractor did mow a portion of that area. I understand he didn't, he didn't mow right up to the woods, but, you know, certainly an area that is adjacent to woods, you know, within a foot or three feet of it is not... We don't, I'll just be honest, we don't give that as high of priority as we would a situation where you've got an entire vacant lot that is overgrown and is surrounded by homes invisible from the street. So, that, I'll admit that this area is at the back of the lot. It's hard to see from the street. It's adjacent to woods. That may be part of the reason we haven't given it as high of priority. I think, you know, we do have authority, I mean, technically, our ordinance, with our ordinance, if there is one blade of grass that's over 10 inches on somebody's property, you could technically say that's a violation. But at some point, common sense has to come in, and you have to set priorities to, as, you know, where you're going to spend the city resources to send our contractor out and mow. So, I think that issue's at play as well. The other thing that's at play is that there is another developer, Ryan Holmes, that has been interested in purchasing those properties with the intent of developing them. I was told that that was gonna happen very soon. It may have happened already, but that, that's a positive development, I think, would bring a more permanent solution into this area is if that happens. And I've met with this developer. They're very interested in Xenia and building here.
Is there a closing date?
So, I, I'm not aware of what the closing date is.
We've talked to him for several months. For several months. So, with all due respect, I'll believe it when I see the closing.
Sure.
Rumors of that's been for several years now.
Thank you. From my perspective, and I think speaking, at least for Councilman Lauterbach, if this has been a continuing problem, I understand limited resources, but I also understand that our ordinance is our ordinance. I would like to see action on that particular aspect, and if we are sending our contractor out, I'm not sure exactly where the pins are and such, but we're paying that contractor to mow a lot. I expect the whole lot to be mowed. So, that's my perspective.
I've got a quick question. Would a retention pond be part of a person's personal property?
Yes, it could.
Sure could be.
I guess.
Okay. I wasn't clear on that. Thank you.
I'm not clear either.
Would we never talk about that?
I spoke to, I talked to several residents out there because the homeowners association is defunct.
It's been disbanded since we...
No longer there. The maintenance, the entrance wasn't being maintained. The city is now mowing the entrance to right, or to Sterling Green, and what I was told was, any retention ponds were the responsibility of the property owner that backed up to the retention pond.
Yes, and Fisher Homes owns that retention area that's not being cared for. And something that I...
Okay, so they own the lot?
They own, yes.
Okay. I'm with you now.
And it's not woods, it's one, one tree line. So, they own to the other side of the tree line.
And yes, sir, when we moved in, the tree line was a little overgrown, but with a little pruning, the tree, the tree has been pruned back to the fence where it belongs. However, we did not prune their tree. So, I understand that he says it's a woods, but it's a couple trees that have continued to grow over the years that are now growing over the fence. They're not supposed to be woods. There is a cornfield right on the other side of the fence. It's not woods.
I don't think we can find resolution here in the council meeting tonight. I would like to say thank you, all of you residents, for coming, because it's very important for us to know these things, and you have gone through the proper channels, so thank you for that also. And, Mr. City Manager, if there is anything that can be done to assist, I surely would hope that we are moving...
Well, clearly, to the extent that there may be any debris and any drainage infrastructure, that's something we can look at imminently and make sure. One of the really exacerbating problems here, we've had two straight years of above-normal rainfall.
True.
You're gonna have more flooding issues, you're gonna have a lot more grass growth. We've seen that in our own budget. I know council knows a lot of our, our budget issues with respect to additional costs for mowing. Obviously, you know, we'll, we'll keep working with the contractor that we have to keep things knocked down. The best hope is that we can see to the city planners, appoint, see some type of transaction on the properties themselves to a developer that is actually going to invest in turning those properties over. There's not a lot, really nothing we can do to compel that. We can do whatever we can to try to encourage it. I would defer to the law director in terms of any specific additional steps we can take with the current owner, so long as they own it, because I know this has been a problem not just this year or last year. This has been a problem for many years. Since the housing market turned with the recession, this has been a problem in that neighborhood.
Through Brian, we can certainly pursue charges for any violations that occur on the property, and we can certainly do that, so...
Please don't hesitate to contact us when that growth gets above what the city ordinance is. We certainly can't be everywhere at all times, but if you will let us know and someone comes out there and checks, we will take action.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come and speak at the, to the Xenia City Council this evening before we move on? Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name and address, and let's try to keep our comments to three to four or five minutes, please.
Okay, no problem.
Hi, my name is Robin Irvin. I'm at 1515 Reed Avenue, Xenia, Ohio, and I have with me...
My name is Megan Roder, and I'm at 1026 Bell Brick Avenue.
And I want to thank Mayor Bayless and Mr. Bazlak, Mr. Merriman, Mr. Lewis, and the council members for the opportunity to speak tonight real briefly. I am the head coach of Xenia High School Chair and Hip Hop. Megan is my new assistant coach, and we wanted to come and talk to you real briefly tonight regarding the grant application that we put in for the Xenia community funding. We are in a transitional phase. I am just taking over the program. I've coached for Xenia schools for 11 years, but I'm officially taking over as the new chair and hip hop coach, and I just wanted to bring a little insight to you. Some of you have seen, I mean, you know, the hip hop program obviously is a storied program. You've, you know, it's been around, the successes beyond this is going into the seventh year. They have national, international wins representing Xenia. One of the biggest things that we have is the X. The X being Xenia. We have our new T-shirt this year. It says the original X because everything we do, the girls throw the X at the end, representing Xenia. We can go to whatever state we go in, whether it be Nevada, when we went to Las Vegas, we went to Orlando, we went to Indiana. They know who Xenia is. We have people coming up. The girls represent the Xenia community and Xenia Community Schools with pride, and all of the fundraising, we, you know, everything that we do is paid for by the sweat equity and whatever we can do by the parents and the cheer program, you know, the students and the athletes that are in it. We, it's not just a group of kids. These are students with last year GPAs 3.0 and above. This year, we have the president of the Student Council Executive Board that is on our varsity cheer squad and on the hip hop team. Yesterday, they kicked off the meeting for the district-wide staff meeting and also went to the Senior Citizen Center afterwards to perform for the seniors, to invite them to come out to the games. It's just an important thing that we try to, you know, get some, you know, funds flowing through the program, because there are a lot of needs that cannot always be met by the students and the parents. And sometimes, not every student has the backing, you know, of the parents, so we try to help them out, too. And so, that's what we wanted to come before you tonight and just ask you to consider us when you're doing your distribution of funds from the grant funding. The, the fact that we can go to Florida and there are teams that are international-level teams, and they go, you guys are from Xenia, Ohio. We remember you. We saw you the first time in Cincinnati. The latest accolade they received was in May. The hip hop program was awarded the number one ranked varsity hip hop team in the United States through the U.S. Finals. The girls all received rings. We received a banner for the school, and they received the national championship ranking. So, that was big because they competed, they were ranked against seven cities within the country and all of them. So, just something that we wanted to bring to your attention, let you know that we're still out there, we're still representing the community proudly, and hope that you would, you know, consider us, you know, in our grant application, you know, when you're doing that. I brought Megan along, you know, it's a sense of pride that I have when I started my coaching career. Megan was a four-year varsity cheerleader for Xenia. She was a two-year member of the hip hop team, and she came back and she wanted to coach. It meant that much to her. So, I'm gonna just give her just a minute to speak, and, you know, we'll close so we don't run over our time, but what it means to her to come back to coach, having been a member.
Like Robin said, I graduated in 2010. I cheered at Xenia High School for four years, and I was on the hip hop team for two years. I started, I helped start the hip hop team, and it's grown so much, and it just makes me emotional to think how much it's grown and to see these girls be so dedicated and so involved with their school. And I was really excited to get back into that, to help these girls get back in, get back into the program and get, get back into this. So, I definitely think that I, as I myself, had to pay for a lot of my stuff in cheerleading and in hip hop. I came from a family that didn't have a lot of money, and so I worked my tail off so I could be a part of these things. So, coming into this, Robin said that our funding was very low, and so I said, of course, I will come speak, because I know how hard it is, that I wanted to be a part of this program so much that I worked my tail off so I could do it, and I want to help these girls be able to enjoy the same kind of things that I did all four years of high school. So, that's all I have to say.
If you guys want to stick around, you're on our agenda item. As a matter of fact, it's agenda item number F. I think it'd be worthwhile for you to stick around.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please?
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of Xenia City Council, Mr. Finance Director, Mr. Law Director. My name is Thomas Scrivens. I reside at 725 Lexington Avenue here in the city. I just wanted to bring to your attention, maybe had escaped the rounds of the nuisance inspector, may escaped the process where we get nuisances abated. I'm a lifelong resident of Middle Run Baptist Church at 1000 East Church Street here in Xenia, and I'm on that corner, the corner of East Church and North Patton. I'm on that corner very frequently, and I see a lot of the city vehicles coming and going, and very few, over a day's time, would turn to the right and proceed east on East Church Street, past our church. And if one did, one would immediately see that one lot is nice and clean and according to code, and one lot is grossly out of, out of code. And I don't know how it would escape one driving down these, up East Church Street, but apparently it has. We'd like to see that cleaned up if we could. When we have events at our, our church, people park on East Church Street, they can't get out on the passenger side for the overgrowth past the curb. So, if it's gotten past the curb, it's well beyond a violation. That's one lot. There's another lot that will come off the curb and get you on Taylor Street. There's another lot, as a matter of fact, there's a whole alley extending from North Fair Street down to Leach Street where we found the, the OD lady. I don't know how that escaped somebody picking up and calling the nuisance inspector and say, hey, you got 99 tires here, a couple of mattresses, a truck full of debris. Who's gonna abate that? It's been there. It's, it's occupying space. It has inertia at this point. Like to see that cleaned up if we could, sir. There's a ponding of water on Orchard Street there in front of the World Peace Tabernacle. It drains down from East Church Street. It doesn't make the grade to go on down at the bottom of the hill, one catch basin at the bottom of the hill. It doesn't make that grade at ponds. It's potted all summer. I've seen birds splashing in there all summer. Now, just recently, we had a little dry spell, but like to see that cleaned up. And then right there at our corner, at North Patton and East Church Street, where, where the streets intersect, water ponds there, it doesn't drain all the way around the corner the streets intersect, water ponds there, it doesn't drain all the way around the corner and down to Patton and Clark Street where it could hit a catch basin. I don't know if the city could maybe just cut a groove there so the water can flow. If you're sitting on top of the hill, you have to channel water away from you, else just go pond where you are, on top of the hills, now go flow downhill. So, just thought we'd bring those to your attention. I understand that you're requesting a supplemental this year in your FY, you know, for the extended weed control program, this would be a good deployment of the public funds here at this point. So, with that, Mr. President, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your time, and God bless you, I think you're doing a wonderful work, it's not easy leading a city, especially the dollar bills that you guys get paid, and we just thank you for your service.
Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Do you have addresses or is it rather obvious?
Ray Charles could see the violations.
Okay. The reason I ask, I got a call from a lady on East Market and I think she called you too, Brent, her name escapes me.
Walker.
Walker? Her last name's Walker.
Yes.
But there's a vacant lot next to her, she says has several mattresses on it.
Okay.
So, yeah, and I think we need to address these.
I mean, I can understand making priorities for expenditures, but at some point, every nuisance has to be abated, it's just that simple. Thank you, sir, appreciate your time, God bless you.
Would anyone else like to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please?
Seeing no more, let's move to reports, or excuse me, to items from City.
Me. Me.
Sorry, I was right the first time, to reports of committees, it's been a long day, I apologize. Councilwoman Mills, Board for Recreation Arts and Cultural Activities.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Braca Board had our meeting and we had a great meeting. One of the things that we were talking about was Downtown Christmas, that is our next large event that we are going to participate in. Xenia Downtown now has taken over the Santa and he is going to be at Xenia Station, so we want to make sure everybody meets Santa at Xenia Station, but Towards Independence has offered us our, the building. So, the Braca Board has been looking at opportunities for family fun, and we want the families to have a great time when they come down to Towards Independence. So, we're looking at four areas to be able to work with, one is entertainment, second is games, third is activities, and the fourth is refreshments. We have a lot going on, but I'm not at liberty right now to say, everything's not been signed in gold yet, but hopefully by the next couple of meetings, we will be able to talk about what is going on, but it's gonna be a great time and it is geared up for families of all ages. And so, we don't want to leave anyone out, so if you're zero to 100, please come down to Towards Independence, there'll be something for you to do and we're very excited about that. The other thing is that we are in our last Music in the Park. We have had six different opportunities to be able to enjoy music in the park, our last one is August the 17th and it begins at 6:30 because they are so great and they take so long in performing that they get that extra half hour, and it's the Green County Adult Band. It is a fabulous event, so please come out on the 17th, that is Sunday, for the Green County Adult Band. And also, we had at our last meeting, Mr. Justin Shirley, he is a Warner Middle School teacher and he came to Braca Meeting to share two of his new classes that he's gonna have. One is a project-based learning class and the second one is a student leadership class. And he asked us how these classes could partner with the city, and these are about 60 children that are very interested in becoming part of leadership and making movement into progressing the city in a better way, and we were very happy to be with him. I know he's talked with Brian Forstner, and so we are well on our way supporting the middle school. And another thing that he added that I thought was wonderful is, our middle school will be starting a National Junior Honor Society, and so that is not a common thing for junior highs to have, so we're very excited about that also. And that was pretty much the basis of our Braca Meeting, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything for Councilwoman Mills and Braca, please? Seeing none, Councilman Smith, Traffic Commission, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Xenia City Traffic Commission met on Monday, August 4th. That meeting was actually chaired by Vice Chair Sarah Mays, I was unable to attend that meeting. But also present was our Public Service Director and City Engineer, Chris Berger, as well as Sergeant Scott Beagle from the Xenia Police Department. The only item for discussion, there were no visitors or audience comments at that meeting, was a modified proposal for the prohibition of parking on an area of West Ankeny, and that has been modified, I believe, to not be as extensive. Instead of 84 feet, it's down to 62 feet up to certain utility pools.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to turn that over to, I want to turn that over to Chris because he was there, he can talk about it.
You did good.
Yeah.
Just want to get it right. It's about 84 feet from the center line of North King, back towards the west, like you're going out towards the fairgrounds. Traffic Commission, when we, whenever we propose a, any kind of prohibitive, prohibition of parking, Traffic Commission always tasks us first to making sure that if we do this, does everybody have parking alternatives? And there happen to be one resident along that section who doesn't. So, that's why we modified, we originally were talking about the whole, on the south side of West Ankeny from North King to North Galloway, we basically, we shrunk it up so that we can still accomplish somewhat improved site there. If you've ever been on North King and you want to turn left, there is a problem there, clearly. But, so we, we modified it and now it's like 84 feet from the center line of North King back to the west, and there, as Councilman Smith said, there's a couple of utility poles right there, so that's where we would stop. That would give the resident who did not have any alternative parking ample place, two, two or three even, to possibly park on the street still.
Thank you. And that was voted unanimously by Traffic Commission, so those letters will go out to those residents and then that will be brought to City Council as an adoption for an ordinance at a later date.
Thank you. Anything for Councilman Smith and Braca, please?
I've seen that same spot, I completely agree, that's an excellent idea. I've noticed that there seems to be a lot of large vegetation growing there as well.
On that corner.
On that corner, that's what causes me to inch out very carefully to, to see what, what's safe and what's not safe. Subject for another day, but just as you brought that up and the reason it was done for, if we could take a peek at that for that vegetation as well, that certainly has grown a lot larger than it had been before. Mayor Bayless, Board of Zoning Appeals, please.
Thank you. There are currently two vacancies on the Board of Zoning Appeals. The City Clerk's office did advertise vacancies and solicited volunteers. It was on the city government channel, the website, the Xenia Communicator, and it has been mentioned at various council meetings. There was only one letter of interest, I don't know why you're missing this wonderful opportunity, but there was one letter of interest, and that was from a former Xenia Planning and Zoney Commissioner, Dr. Aaron James. And Dr. James recently resigned from XPCC due to a conflict in his work schedule, and it made him available now for our Monday meetings. So, we get him one way or another. He does come highly recommended by our City Planner, Brian Forstner, and I will be respectfully recommending the appointment of Dr. James to fill the vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals with an expiration date of April 11th, 2017.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor to appoint, please, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kelp. Any questions or discussion on the motion, please? Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kelp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbeck.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Anything else?
No. Except that there's still one more now.
Still one more to go.
Still one more.
And the mayor really is a, a really lovely person to work with on, on board meetings. You should come spend your Monday nights with her.
Yeah.
And she's also quite the accomplished actress.
Yes, she is.
Yes, she is. Moving on to items from City Council and Mayor.
So's Mary Crockett.
That's right.
I see her in the audience, too.
Yeah.
Although she was not the one taken away, as I recall at the performance that I saw, unlike someone else sitting next to me.
I'd like to be your agent.
I have a single item for us from that, an appointment of special counsel. May I have a motion, please, to appoint?
To move.
Moved by Vice President. A second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kelp.
Upstate.
Councilman Lauterbeck.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Any other items from City Council and Mayor this evening, please?
I would just bring up one, but there is an opening on Xenia Planning and Zoning now, too, so. I hated to see Dr. James go, but he's got a great job teaching now, so I'm sure he's happy.
Thank you very much, and if you do have interest in those, please send your letter of interest to our City Clerk, Michelle Johnson, please, at City Hall.
I've got one.
Please.
Mr. President, I don't know if Chris or if Brett, if one of you were gonna talk this night, we've got a lot of construction or road improvements going on at this time, if you want to just talk real quick. A lot of people are concerned with schools starting next week, how that might impact, and that they're not city projects out of our control type of thing.
Yeah, in fact, I'll defer to the, to the City Engineer, I know that he's intimately involved with this.
Well, where do you want to start? Obviously, we've seen 42 is progressing wonderfully, I've been very pleased with that. Latest update, because I figured one of you would ask tonight, right there, which certainly is, is expected as, as well as the public. The latest update I got as far as progress on the 42 job is, weather permitting, we're hoping that the milling of the asphalt should be done early next week, like Monday, Tuesday timeframe. And, and if you notice too, I don't know if you've been on the north end of 42 where they started, they've already started paving, so they're milling and then they got the paper falling right behind them, so John R. Jurgensen doesn't mess around, and that's why they're big and that's why they make money. So, as far as when the paving, once again, weather permitting, we're hoping by the end of next week, and if there's a bad day or two of weather right there, then early the following week. So, the next couple of weeks, we're hoping at least that they'll get all the asphalt down. Detroit Kinsey, or maybe I should say, is there gonna be O-Cal 42, anybody have any questions on that? Detroit Kinsey, they started work this week, once again, that's an ODOT-let project, ODOT-managed project. They, they're basically, they've been, if you've been up there, you've seen they've been putting the caissons in, which is the foundation for the new mast arm signals that are gonna go through there. The next, and as a matter of fact, they may be close to, by tomorrow, having that work done. Then they are gonna start doing the detour of the bikeway that crosses Kinsey to keep that open, so what they're gonna do is they're gonna detort back towards like, going towards the school or towards Dockton so that they can do, start the widening part on the, on that return, that radius that goes up to Detroit. Once they've done that, then they're gonna put the bikeway back and then start working back that way, if that makes sense to you. Relative to the schools, I know everyone is concerned about what, what we dealt with in April. If that happens, I can tell you with a straight face, nobody knows how or why that would happen. I'll never say 100% certainty, but that's a totally different ballgame. This is a lane addition to the north side through Dockton and along where the bikeway is. So, yes, school starts next week, yes, it'll be down to a lane with the, with the barrels like it is now, but if we have to close the road, I made the joke to our inspector today, somebody's gonna be on their deathbed, essentially.
I know, I've talked to several citizens about Kinsey-Detroit. Just so people know, I mean, we're taking a lot of criticism for, why are we doing this the week before school starts? And we are at the mercy of-
It's an ODOT-let project.
-ODOT schedule, and I've tried to relay that to people, that we didn't choose to do it the week before school started.
That is 100% correct.
Councilwoman?
And the other thing that I want to also make sure our citizens know, the last construction in that area, they had closed the street, so the traffic lights were either a stop or a go, and there was no way children could cross with a traffic light. This is different, the traffic light will work, there's gonna be slow traffic on all directions, so that will not be as much as a safety issue as it was the first time, because the first time it was take your chance and run. And we definitely had police officers out there every morning to make sure there was no safety problems, but this is a, as you said, a completely different ballgame. The traffic light does work, children will be able to cross as they always do, even with the construction going on.
Yeah, the only, the only time, and I think that that's well put, the only time that I could foresee a potential to close a road down for a short period of time was once the mast arms are delivered and you gotta get the heavy equipment out in the center of the intersection so you can erect it, yeah, I can may, maybe see that, I don't know how, what the contractor's game plan is yet, because that's kind of one of the last things they're gonna do. But as far as the lane widening and, and the stuff we dealt with back in April, you know, I'm gonna have a coronary if that happens again, quite frankly, before you all will.
One last thought, I was asked the same question as Councilman Kelp and others, this is part of a grant, correct?
That is correct.
And what I characterized it to them as is, exactly, we are at the mercy of ODOT to do this, our only true option would have been to forego the grant.
That's correct.
And that is not in the best interests-
As I've said a thousand times, it's, it's, if you want their money, you've gotta play their game.
Progress takes sweat equity and a little bit of discomfort at times.
Temporary inconvenience for a permanent solution.
Absolutely.
Well said.
Mr. City Manager, will the police department be in that area during the school?
As always, if there are issues that begin to arise with traffic around the school, we will work with the school and coordinate that. We haven't had any outreach, in fact, I just talked to the superintendent last night, no concerns expressed at this point for that need, but if it arises, we'll certainly respond to it.
Thank you. Councilman Lauterbeck?
On a related item, I get, I get a couple of calls this week, are we still gonna have police presence in some of our schools?
Yes, we do, our school resource officer, it's a point that may come up next week in the joint session, which I was gonna remind you of later, but we, we do have the officers that's there and we are continuing the DARE program, so we do have a regular presence in the school. I think it's a very appreciative role, we get tremendous feedback from the school district in terms of the value of having the presence of those officers in the school system.
Well, no, I'm 100% for it with all the nutcases out there in today's world. Is, is that in high school and middle schools?
That's correct.
The DARE officer is in elementary?
Correct.
Okay.
One of the points that we'll be discussing in the joint session next week is some additional efforts that we'll be making with the school district to plan for the weather. It's highly, highly unlikely that we'll ever see an active shooter situation, God forbid, but if we do, we want to be ready. But part of that is also being ready for severe weather events, which is a much more likely scenario given where we live. So, you know, again, we want to work very closely with the school district. As you'll, you'll find next week, we've had some excellent dialogue and I'm really very pleased with the leadership and the direction that they're heading with things and very much desire of working with us, you know, corporately and the, and the community for the betterment of the, of the entire city.
And just for the public's information, not all school districts have the same setup that we do.
Correct, that's what it is.
Some school districts don't have any police presence, and I'm 100% for it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else, please? Seeing none, now, reports of city offices.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council, robust agenda, so I will get right to the matters. First item this evening, among the, the core goals established with the X Plan was improvement of the aesthetic appearance and perceived image of the city. The plan identified various initiatives and means by which to achieve this, and the core policy adopted by Council in support of the overall goal was the vacant building registration program. As requested by City Council, our City Planner, Brian Forstner, is prepared tonight to discuss the six-month status of the program and what to expect moving forward. So, again, I want to reiterate, this is just an, an update at the six-month point, so we're fairly, you know, fairly new in the process here. So, again, in conjunction with the agenda report that's been provided, Brian has a brief presentation he's gonna cover, I think.
There, there we go. I'm trying to get the mouse to respond. Good evening again. Yes, as, as you requested, this is a six-month update on, on the progress of the program. In your packets, you, you have the report as well as some maps showing the locations of the vacant commercial industrial buildings that we've identified throughout the city. This is the basic map, there's 30 total buildings that, that we've identified thus And what I sent you was as of about two weeks ago, it was a snapshot, it's, it's an evolving situation, continues to change. So, basically, we have 13 that have at least initiated registrations, well, 14 have not. Three of these are exempt from registration due to active building permits, I believe one of those has dropped off and now they're back into registration mode. 13 of the properties are being actively marketed, 17 are not. We've sent out 17 notices of violation for failure to register and/or pay the fee, and the deadlines for those are actually the end of this week, so, so next week, in some cases, we will be potentially looking at some, filing some court charges. So, this, this map shows you the locations, the, the red ones on this map are, where no active marketing is occurring, the green ones are where there is active marketing. And finally, like I mentioned earlier, this, the green on this map is the 13 that, where it says initial year, that means they've registered, they're in their initial year of registration, 14 have not registered, and then the three exempt. Most of these are in the core of the city, but there are some on the, some outliers in the outer parts of the city. Basically, the progress is slow, slow but steady. As you can tell, I mean, there are a lot who have not responded despite frequent efforts to contact them, notices sent. to contact them, notices sent. Some of these owners are, do not live in the area, are difficult to track down in some cases, and some are just simply refusing or disagreeing with our interpretation. So, but nonetheless, we're proceeding, and we'll take the appropriate legal action to make sure everybody's following the ordinance. Some of the challenges we run into, the, as I mentioned, the difficulty in reaching some of the owners, unwillingness to comply, that's, that happens with code enforcement. So that's certainly not unanticipated. One thing we did not anticipate was the fact that we cannot assess the delinquent fees to people's property taxes. This is something that just about every example ordinance I looked at from other communities had that function built in. However, our county auditor informed us that he is not permitted by the Ohio Revice Code to do that. I contacted other communities, they said they've had the exact same issue. So he's correct. He does not, apparently, he has authority to levy, to assess things like weeds and nuisance abatement, but not vacant building registration fees. So, that doesn't mean we can't, we don't have a tool. Basically, it just means we have to go through the court process to obtain those fees. So, just a, so that created a delay in the process, but we're back on track, and we're set the notices out, and we're proceeding in the correct way now. In a program like this, it's, you know, six months is a little early to expect significant tangible results, but I can tell you that we, combined with the code enforcement efforts that we've been undertaking, we have had some successes where building owners have fixed up their buildings, they've started to actively market them, where they hadn't been before, or they just weren't marketing them as much. In this case, we have the former rallies, for instance, here, where the owner repainted it, really dressed it up quite nicely. Still a vacant building, but at least it's not an eyesore, and it is being actively marketed. There we go. Former Dairy King is another example, and that property was not being marketed, now it is being actively marketed. Anecdotally, we, I think what this, what I can see with this program is that it's forcing some conversations with owners about what are your plans for your building? What, you know, you're just sitting on it right now, you're not doing anything, what's your plan? Do you plan to hang on to this property? You gonna try to sell it? It's forcing those types of conversations. And in that, I think people are, you know, it's getting people's attention, they're starting to market the properties more. We're also getting better information so that when the prospective business, and I can think of one or two very recently that has come to town, and we've referred them to some of these property owners, to, and now that we've tracked them down, now that we have a relationship built with these people, we can very easily connect them with opportunities. So, so again, you know, not a lot of concrete tangible results, but I'm definitely seeing positive momentum, and I think I'm optimistic about the program.
Just add that we're continuing many of these particular instances, as Brian says, to try to work with those property owners, provide, you know, connection points, that the goal is not to be punitive to these property owners, but rather to have productive commercial enterprises in these locations. And so that's the ultimate goal that we're trying to focus on through whatever special programs or efforts that we can provide. So again, particularly downtown, we've got a lot of active efforts, but even in some of the outlined locations, we've been working with some of those building owners specifically to help them out.
Any questions, comments? Councilman Lauterbach.
I wanna commend you for, I know it's, we're in the early stages, but I've already seen some progress. I've seen some people put their buildings up for sale. And what's it mean when it says, "Status, not registered"?
Exactly what it means. They have, either, well, it's just not that straightforward. It's, they haven't even, either started or finished the registration process. So, I mean, in order to complete the registration process, you have to fill out the registration form, you have to provide proof of insurance for the building in compliance with the ordinance, and you have to provide some sort of a plan on how, what you plan to do with billing. And you also have to identify an authorized agent who's in...
That's what I was talking about.
Either Green County or one of the adjacent counties. So there are some people who submitted the application, but they haven't done, you know, they haven't submitted proof of insurance, or they don't have an authorized agent. That would be not registered. So just whoever hasn't completed that process.
I don't wanna pick on anybody, but 17 West Third, that's been an eyesore, and I'd say they're not registered.
Right.
45 East Main, would that be Senator Widener's property?
Yes, and he has an open building permit, and so at least as long as that building permit's open, he's exempt from registering. But I will tell you that we do have some outstanding notices of violation for property maintenance code violations on the farm.
I just want the citizens to know, and I've said it before, nobody's above the law in this city. I don't understand why a state senator would not wanna step up to the plate and take care of his property. But that's why I'm very much for this vacant building ordinance, and we can't, election or not elections, we've gotta treat everybody equally in the city, and he needs to step up to the plate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, please? Councilman?
Thank you very much. I'm all for the registry. I think one of the successes, and the photos show it, is the old rallies right there on Main Street. I mean, it was a horrible eyesore, and it looks much, much better now, since they've, you know, addressed just the sod of the building. As far as not being able to assess the taxes, I know I've brought it up in the past, I spoke in-depth with a company that they're in charge of registering vacant buildings and collecting the registry amounts and the fines and all that sort of thing, and have a very good track record of it. So, at no cost to the city here. So I don't know if now's the time, since we can't assess the taxes, that we start a conversation with this company to see if possibly that's an avenue that we wanna take with this.
Well, the company would still have to abide by our ordinances, so if it's just a matter of collecting the fees, we've already attempted that. And the next step is to go through the court system. So I guess, I mean, unless I'm missing something, I'm not, I guess it's not clear to me what service the company would be, like, what would they be providing?
We can talk about it off.
Any other comments, please? Councilman, or Mr. Vice President, sorry.
One, thank you for your guys' work. It's just not an easy job, and I have to have these conversations with the property owners. Any challenge, I mean, the ordinance as written going forward here, any challenges or changes needed? Are we okay proceeding as is?
Not at this point.
There probably will be at some point, but...
Yeah, I mean, at this point, nothing immediate. You know, I did check with Ron on the issue with the auditor, I think, and I believe you said it's pretty, it's fine to leave it as is, because there's another measure in the ordinance that allows us to take it.
Correct. There's another enforcement measure on there. And I spoke to David Graham directly, too, oddly enough, during the fair, he came up, and we talked about it again. And unless we're doing some sort of nuisance abatement, there's just no way we can attach it, so. Because I said, "Well, isn't this nuisance abatement?" And he goes, "No, it's a fee." So.
But, no, I think, you know, the ordinance as written has been working fairly well. Of course, more time will tell.
Okay. Thank you. Any other observations? Thank you very much. We do appreciate that. My wife has a saying, "Begin as you intend to proceed." This is our first foray through this. I would encourage, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Law Director, please be fair with these businesses, but be firm. This is our ordinance, no one's above the law, and we intend to induce cleanup in the downtown area and other areas.
I just wanna say, too, that Jeff Ziegler has been doing the lion's share of the work on this, and I think he, you know...
Please pass along our thanks to him as well, then.
And I actually would like just to extend a thanks to council. This was a gutsy call, not a, not, or, excuse me, difficult legislation passed, because it doesn't make a lot of people very happy, but it's a necessary step, and as many have pointed out, it is reaping, you know, fruits in the harvest already, so appreciate your efforts on that. And then we will continue periodically to provide updates on this, and keep abreast of the progress of the program.
Thank you.
First action item this evening, request introduction of an ordinance to accept dedication of a .2446 acre public access easement under West Park Square Shopping Center property. This was a required condition for approval by the zoning commission of a plan to construct a new driveway entrance from West Main Street into the Park Square, West Park Square plaza. This access easement, like existing public access easements at the West Park Square, shopping center is a standard practice and is intended to ensure emergency and general public access to parcels in the shopping center that lack public street frontage.
Thank you. May I have an introduction, please?
Someone introduce, Mr. President.
Introduced by Councilman Lauterbach. Thank you very much.
The next item this evening, staff requesting council adopt as an emergency an ordinance to appropriate supplemental funding in the amount of $51,120 into line 361-6220-53802 to cover unanticipated expenses related to electric services at the Simon Kenton facility. As detailed in the staff report, the low estimated readings have been paid on a monthly basis covering electric services for the past year. Once annually, DPNL will take a manual reading of the meter in order to get to a final reconciliation for the year period. To our surprise, this toll and bill was substantially higher than anticipated and well more than available budgeted resources can cover. Staff is in the process of assessing the total electric usage, trying to determine why the bill is so high, given the very limited activity at the facility. We have also taken immediate steps to modify current maintenance practices at the facility to help minimize any liabilities created from the electric load through the remainder of this year. In the meantime, however, staff feels it necessary for the city to complete the necessary remittance of payment for the billable amount to stay current with DPNL. Clearly, this expense is untimely and concerning. Staff feels that sustaining such maintenance expenses over a long haul is not in the city's best interest, given the limited use of the facility at present. And despite our efforts to date, no specific repurpose or end user has been identified. Therefore, staff suggests that unless a specific reuse purpose can be nailed down over the remainder of the demolition moratorium period, that the city take serious consideration of demolition after the moratorium period ends in November of this year. But tonight, however, staff request approval of the emergency ordinance to provide funding for the billed electric service from July of 2013 to present.
Have a motion, please, as an emergency.
Senate.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second, Mr. President.
Second by Councilman Lauterbach. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Councilman Lauterbach.
You know, when I saw this, I bet I had a heart attack, to be quite honest with you.
Me, too.
We anticipated, when we were thinking about having our police division, no, I'm sorry, the city hall at Simon Kenton, we did the due diligence, and if I remember right, I think he even says in this report, it was $40 to $50 a month? Was that what was anticipated, or, okay?
That was the, that was the, what's the term with Chris?
That's what the estimated billing was per month until we got this large bill, which was, we just got the first week of August.
Okay, what was it when it was in operation as a school? Did we have...
That's, yeah, that's what I, we put in the staff report, or maybe I did it, but the, with the city manager. I requested that very information, because I had the same question. We did not take ownership of that building officially until June 19th, 2013. So logically, then, when the school's vacated at Christmas in 2012, so A, what were the monthly estimated billings, January, February, and I'm talking 2013? Then, like, whenever you switch over, or you purchase a new property, or you buy, you know, DPNL comes out, makes a final reading. So B, what was that final read that was given to the schools before we started receiving those bills? I've requested that information, DPNL will not give it to me until I get authorization from Xenia Community Schools. I wrote a letter to Xenia Community Schools on Tuesday of this week, and naturally, with schools starting up right there, I'm sure they have higher priorities, but I have not heard back yet, because I'm thinking the same thing you are, too. I'd like to see what, what if any difference, or what should have been a tip-off to us, so to speak.
I have no clue. That's a, what, a 41,000 square foot building, or something like that?
Yeah, roughly.
I have no clue.
Just to put it in perspective, when we, yeah, when we provided some estimates back two years ago, I think it was, or thereabouts, when we first started the discussion with Simon Kenton, we, of course, wanted to provide a comprehensive look at what cost for the facility would be, so we talked about what the overhead cost, operating cost would be. And based on the information that we had received from the schools in doing our due diligence in that process, you were looking at an expense with a school operating in a normal calendar year of about 27, it ranged from $27,000 to $36,000 a year. So with the usage that we've had there, which is pretty much limited to HVAC, which is a significant electric load, but without any of the ancillary use, you know, we're seeing a bill that is right in the middle or to the high side of that range, and it's entirely inexplicable. There were no red flags that would have tipped us off to get to this point, and we are in the process, we've hired Reddick Electric to help us look at it. They've indicated that, you know, there is a significant load from keeping the air handle running, which was necessary to avoid any mold buildup and, you know, condensation, moisture buildup in the facility. But, you know, I can assure you, had we even had a remote clue that this was going to be an issue, certainly we would have taken some steps to address it sooner.
The actual bill was $33,000, but you're asking for $51,000 because of late fees?
No. Let me jump on that, Chris. This actually, this billing period covers not just this calendar year, but dating back to when we took possession of the billing in July of last year. So you essentially have from July of last year through current, where they've done this reconciliation to get to the current $33,000 amount, but then we wanna make sure that we have sufficient funds to cover out the remainder of this year, which incidentally would coincide pretty closely with the moratorium on the demolition, and it's at that point, I think, as I said, if we don't have a better alternative, I think it's time to take a very serious look at them.
Well, that helps me to know that approximately $27,000 was budgeted, and actually, the actual bill is from year to year is $33,000, and you're asking for the remainder of the money for the balance of the year. So, yeah, but I'm glad we've got an electrical contractor. It just, something doesn't add up with...
Join the club. And, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, Chris and I spent quite a bit of time in the last, you know, week or two here on this issue, because with the experience that we've seen and the school had there, it just does not add up. There has to be some other factor that's weighing in on the situation. We just don't know what that is. And the bill's out there right now, so we think it's important to follow through that obligation on the city's behalf, which is why we're bringing it to you right now.
And if I could, I would add on what the city manager made in the last statement there, you know, especially with this revelation, unless something drastic changes, I don't know anymore how we at the staff could support not demoing that building. I mean, it's just, we can't justify it ourselves, and if, and if you would so choose, for whatever reason, to at least, you know, keep as is once the demolition period, or moratorium is over, then I'm gonna be recommending that we do a full, we hire an HVAC expert, an electrical expert, to tell us, until such a time someone occupies that building or something happens to the building, this is what you need to be doing in the interim to keep the cost as low as possible, but...
And it makes, it makes it less marketable, too, to an outside entity, if they have this, I'm hoping the electrical contractor comes up with a solution.
Yeah, and at that particular point, you know, it may be a moot point if you all at that, at the moratorium says right there, but I can't emphasize enough what the city manager was saying about the, you know, the reason why we were running those air handlers is the black mold. We gotta keep that air circulating through there, and you wanna talk about a costly solution, even if we have to demo that building, we have to remedy that issue, so you take the good with the bad.
I think if I remember right, the cost of demolition was around $250,000?
Yeah, I think that's what the school...
That did not include, that didn't include mold mitigation?
No, because it was, at least currently, to our knowledge, it doesn't exist over there, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you very much. Back in the winter, didn't we have some basketball teams in there practicing?
Yeah, we had, essentially, the lead of the city sponsors was utilizing that for some practice time. And, you know, we monitored that situation pretty closely, so I don't think there, other than, you know, maybe some parties Chris might have hosted with disco balls and whatnot, I don't think that would have contributed really to the overall load that much.
Well, I've been on record... Well, I've been on record since we took that building, that that building would be a money pit to the city. It's, it's proven to be a money pit. It's continuing to be a money pit. Now we're hiring an electrical contractor to go in and assess a building that we're going to probably tear down if I have my way, and I will not support any more moratoriums on that building. I mean, that building's worth, or that land is worth more to us with that building off there than with that building on there. If that building was marketable, the schools would not have given us that building for a buck.
And if I'd add, so noted, and I think, I think staff's pretty much getting there with that. I think I can speak for staff. We've hired the electric contractor, Ready Electric Local Business, to basically say to us, not spending a whole lot of money, just to say, does this jive, does this bill jive? I mean, based upon the air handling, I think we got our answer. So Ready's basically, you know, being, you know, good, working with us, saying, yeah, we'll do a full assessment. If you guys want to keep the building, yeah, about how you can do it, but, but to go to your point about, are they, do we spend thousands and thousands of dollars? No. We just had them look to say, does this jive? And I think the answer was pretty much yes.
Maybe I missed it, but did we have the meters read monthly or yearly?
They do an estimated reading, and then they come out once annually to do a final, a final onsite reading, and then do the reconciliation, which is why, you know, the monthly bills were a scant amount, and then you end up with a significant year end reading.
Okay. Mr. President?
Just a question, I mean, definitely before the moratorium comes back up, I like beforehand, but can we get what our monthly carrying cost on that building is now?
Yeah. And it's, at this point, you know, you have a base fee for insurance, because it adds to the overall insurance load, and then we can break down, I think the primary expenses would be gas and electric, and we can certainly provide that. And again, we still have one ongoing possibility for that building, and we do want to exhaust that, and I think it's a tremendous opportunity. I think we will have to continue to work with them to see if they can generate the operating dollars to be able to utilize that facility, because if they can do it, it's a really cool opportunity. But, you know, given these operating costs or these overhead costs, you know, I agree with the city engineer that, you know, by this fall, we're going to have to take a very careful look at this, because it's a lot of money going into really nothing right now, other than maintaining the building.
Typically, with, with commercial buildings, they put in meters that they, they can dial in and read.
Yes.
Not sure if that's something we want to look at for our other buildings. I'm not sure if we have the same problem with other buildings, or we're just go to, the estimates have just been fine, but it takes away these surprises.
Yeah, and in that particular case, you know, that, their meter for that facility is actually inside the utility room, so, so as a matter of fact, we had to let them in so that they could read it. I think that's why they only visually read it once a year.
Thank you. Any other discussion or question, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
The next request of action this evening is for a motion to authorize an agreement with WA Hammond Dryright for the use of the remaining building at the H&amp;A site for material storage. Hammond Dryright is a valuable local business that provides desiccants for various commercial and institutional uses. A primary material supplier to Hammond Dryright is going out of business, and they're taking possession of a large quantity of material necessary for their business operations. The material's a non-toxic natural material, and according to the city's environmental consultant with H&amp;A, the material poses no environmental concerns. As detailed in the contract, in exchange for this storage opportunity, Hammond Dryright will provide mowing and maintenance at the H&amp;A location, reducing our expense to sustain that site. Hammond Dryright is aware that the city will be actively marketing the site, which may have an impact on the long-term storage potential at the site. We're very pleased to recommend this action to council that will allow the city to offer assistance to a local business and help sustain jobs in our community.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, to authorize the city manager?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor, second by Councilwoman Mills. May I have a, excuse me, any discussion or conversation on this motion, please?
Let me understand this, right, WA Hammond, they're not going out of business?
Correct.
I didn't want to, yeah.
Yes.
But they're.
Their material supplier out of Canada is going out of business, and they have the opportunity.
That's good news.
To purchase, yeah, a large quantity, I think a 20, 30-year quantity of the material that they need as part of their product line. And so this will ensure that they can continue their operations as normal.
Yeah, they've been a long time Xenia company. Just had to clear that.
Yeah, make sure that that's clear.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or question, please?
Are they utilizing the blue building or not?
Correct. They'll be utilizing the blue building, and there'll probably be some additional storage on the exterior. They've indicated that they will work with us so that, you know, the site is maintained orderly and in a way that's code compliant. We feel it's good, because they will have some type of regular presence there that'll provide for some security. The building is not very secure, but this is a very innocuous inert material. They have no concerns in terms of, you know, somebody wanting to steal it, I'm not sure why you would. But again, just having their presence there, we find value to help provide security at the facility. We've talked with the environmental consultant, as I said, and no concerns with the materials, you know, it's very inert.
I do think it's a win-win for all parts.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Do I understand, how many acres is there? Forty-some?
Off the top of my head, twenty. Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's quite that much.
But are they going to maintain, they going to maintain the 20 acres?
Well, we won't, it won't be manicured. It'll be, you know, we'll keep it knocked down per the current process that we are, and, and I don't know that we've got the detail, certainly helping to keep the areas along the frontage mowed more, more closely, and the rest will be a knockdown. In other words, it'll be a little higher in the middle portion than it is along the roadway.
It'll be less mowed in a later time.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Law Director?
It acculates to Steve Brodsky. He actually drafted this agreement, and I think did a great job with it, so.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
The next item this evening, staff is pleased to present two action steps to city council that would allow us to pursue redevelopment at the former Fomers grocery store in the Xenia Town Square Shopping Center. Staff is first requesting an emergency ordinance to appropriate $15,000 into line 101-1550-53190 for contractual services to cover the costs associated with creation of a redevelopment plan. Second, we recommend council approve a contract with Creative Entertainment Concepts of Indianapolis to complete the plan and to work with the city for redevelopment. As detailed in your agenda report, CEC has a strong track record of redeveloping vacant sites for family entertainment services. The former Fomers has been identified as a strong candidate in completion of the redevelopment for these purposes at this location, would support many of the city's strategic goals, including job creation, vacant retail infill, downtown revitalization, and as discussed earlier this evening, expansion of local recreation and entertainment services. We're pleased to have with us this evening one of the principal partners from Creative Entertainment Concepts, Mr. David Bullard, should have, should council have questions about the, this opportunity or his firm. I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Johnson. Harvey was helpful in getting this opportunity lined up, and so we want to give some credit where credit is due. Staff feels it's an incredible opportunity for us to engage the services, and we're hopeful that it will result in some positive development.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency for the first item?
So moved as an emergency.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or question on the first motion, please? Councilman?
This is something, like I said earlier, has been a long time coming. If I could do backflips down here, I would. What this includes is a 14-lane, please correct me if I'm wrong, 14-lane bowling alley, laser tag course, which is very big right now, a bumper car track, arcade, party banquet area, and sports bar. So I think this is a great, great, great opportunity for the city of Xenia.
Plus outdoor seating.
Yes.
Oh, did I miss something?
Yeah.
It's okay.
I want to make just one quick correction, because they've actually, they've already been out here, starting to do on their own accord, starting to do some of this work, which I think is a credit to, you know, to their commitment to the project. According to the draft that David sent earlier this week, I don't think they'll include the bumper car portion, but most of the rest of that, I think, will be included in the, in the final plan. So we're very excited with those different components. There's some specific things that we know that folks here in Xenia are very interested with, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, please? Councilman?
Thank you very much. I too am in support of the city helping to foster this. The people have been on record, they want a steakhouse, they want more restaurant opportunities. I mean, anytime we can bring this type of entertainment into our city, and if people utilize it, those people have to eat somewhere, they have to do other things around that location. So I think it could definitely help develop some other things in the downtown area. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to finally do something with Xenia Town Square.
Any other comments? Councilwoman, please.
I can't go without saying how excited I am, too, with the possibilities, but I think Councilman Cow put a very important message in there. We have to use this, so I want to encourage everyone in Xenia to be a cheerleader, be excited about this coming to our town, but also use it and to be involved in it, because this is the first step, and I pray many more to come, of rebuilding Xenia to what we think that our town should be. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, please? Mr. Vice President?
One. You know, this is just a study phase, so rumors get started and things get blown out of proportion. This is a study phase to look at the marketability of this property and look at the idea, there has to be something from the experts, or I don't think that they would be here today. But it's going to require private investment into our community, which is something this community has needed for a long time. The government cannot fund entertainment for a community unless we raise taxes completely absurdly. So I'm looking forward to see what kind of partners and investment we can bring to make this a reality.
Thank you. My thoughts exactly. I am excited, but tempered with, this is only the first phase of what will be a, a process to bring something in. Sir, did you have a comment to make, please? Thank you.
Introduce himself.
David Bullard from Indianapolis, Indiana. Mayor Bayless, Mr. Councilman, thank you. The only comment I've got beyond what you folks have heard is I heard all the comments about a movie theater, and I spent all day today, I've been over two or three other times, and we'll spend a couple of full days. I'm investing in the community tonight, I'm staying at the Ramada Inn. So I think that we can extend our agreement to include some research on a movie theater. Be glad to do that. The Kmart building would have to be modified significantly, but yet it's there, so I have no problem doing that.
Thank you.
Wonderful. We would greatly appreciate that.
Glad to do that.
You know, you've heard the old saying, build it and they will come. When I, when I have to go, when my wife and I go to a movie, we go to Beaver Creek. When we want to go bowling, we go to Beaver Creek. When we want, and I hope I don't hurt anybody's feelings in the restaurant business, when we want a good steak, we go to Longhorn. So I think, I think Xenia is really ripe. I, I'm sure you're, you've done your market studies, and I think Xenia is really ripe, ripe for this investment, so we appreciate your interest in Xenia.
Yeah, I, I think it is, too, and the movie theaters, you know, still a little iffy. I mean, it takes a lot of bodies to support that, and it's a.
I've heard two different concepts. Are you familiar with the Danbury Dollars, the lower-cost movies, than the upper, the rave and the Hollywood 20s, the eight, nine dollars? I'm sure you guys will do your research on which would be a fit for Xenia.
Yeah, we'll, we'll include that in our report.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I wanted to add, too, that not only do you have Xenia here, but you also have our area communities, as such as to the east of Cedarville and Jamestown, they have to drive through Xenia to get to Beaver Creek, and the same with Yellow Springs, that it is more, your opportunity to build here is more than just for Xenia, but it's for a larger community, and thank you.
Any other questions or comments, please?
How long will that fit, that, this planning study, planning phase, how long is that? We should have a product back in terms of their overall, as I said, they've already begun some initial work here onsite in the city, so we should have, depending on what and how we would extend it, I would think we should have some, some concrete results on some of the packaged products within the next few weeks, or the next couple of months. As indicated, I attached, I had requested a perspective timeline, that if investment was lined, lined up and so forth, what could we see? And so it's a fairly assertive timeline, I'm, I think it's fantastic, so we'll continue to work very closely with David and their group. Perhaps this time next year afterward, we'll all go for a bowl after, after.
That'd be great.
Just one quick thing, and I should know this, but I'll ask anyway, tax abatements. Would this be considered retail?
Yeah, this is probably considered retail.
No?
Probably wouldn't have availability for, or at that site.
How, how could we, as a council, extend tax abatements to, from industrial to retail? I'd defer to the law director, I guess.
There are probably some things we could look at creatively. I don't know of any significant examples off the top of my head that are focusing on retail, because retail tends to be a little bit of a riskier investment, not as much so long term.
Could we take this as a, an action item?
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
That way we can have a study, sort of collective on.
The way, the way you do it is a community reinvestment area. You know, that, we have one of those down by the EV building, but we don't currently have one in the Kmart area. You know, obviously, whenever you think about doing something like that, you got to look at the, you know, the costs and the benefits of extending that, so.
Please give it a, a long look, coordinated staff look, and, and let us know, perhaps at the next, next council meeting, is that reasonable?
Yes.
What your perspective is? Thank you.
I think we did Lowe's, because it was considered impacted.
Now we're to roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now we have a motion, please, to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement.
So moved.
Moved by the Councilwoman Mills, second by the Vice President. We're anxious now. Any discussion or question on this portion of the, the item? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Last action item this evening is a series of recommendations pertaining to the community funding program allowed under section 226 of the Xenia codified ordinances. As detailed in the staff report, it is recommended that council approve community funding to the Xenia High School Cheer and Hip-Hop Group in the amount of $500, and to Diamond and[1667.76] the Xenia High School cheer and hip-hop group in the amount of $500, and to Diamonds and Pearls Community Dance Club in the amount of $500, and authorize the finance director to disperse the funds. It's further recommended that council direct staff to facilitate a reopening and extension of the application period to allow for additional worthwhile funding requests to be accepted with results, whereas such to be presented to city council at a later date. I just want to throw in there that we've had some dialogue with a number of different types of service agencies within the community who were really unaware of the program. I know Marsh and I had, when we met with the folks from the Xenia Area Association of Churches and Ministries, who were kind of stunned to learn that this program was available. So, we're adding that additional recommendation so that we can incorporate some opportunities for those organizations that definitely have a need for funds, and I think it'd be a good opportunity to spend some dollars real estate.
Thank you very much, may I have a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. President, but...
Do we have a second?
We have a motion.
All motion, okay.
I haven't made my motion yet. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like to amend the motion.
Can we talk about what we have first?
Do what?
I'm asking for discussion on what is here first.
We have to have a motion on the floor and a second before we can discuss.
That's why I was asking for a second.
Well...
I'm in the process of making a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, though, that, I mean, this program's been in existence for numerous, numerous years. In the past, the city manager's always been the one that's dispersed the funds, and they've, this year, it is coming back to the city council. I don't believe that an organization that has followed the guidelines of the, in the filing deadlines, should be dinged for getting their information in on time and knowing about the program. So, therefore, I'd like to amend the motion to award the Xenia hip-hop and cheer group at the school the original requested amount of $2,500, which is not out of the ordinary. Typically, we award four to five organizations either $2,000 or $2,500 per year. I'm not opposed to reopening it for the remaining $7,500. But with that, I would like to amend it to award them the original $2,500 and the $500, two diamonds and pearls, because they have received $7,500 in the past, and received funds in 2008 and 2011, they received $2,500 in 2011. So, I believe $500 is appropriate for diamonds and pearls. But with that, I would like to amend the motion to that. Thank you very much.
Just a point of information, Mr. President.
Please.
John, just so Counselman Cowell, Lauterbach, just, or Cowell looking at you. On that one, just keep in mind that part of the recommendation that to not do the $2,500 is that, based on my understanding of how the code is written, because it's a school organization, they're only eligible for up to $1,000. So, if you wanted to make the amendment, unless the law director feels differently, I think that it's probably limited to $1,000.
With that, I mean, I would argue that it's not funded by the schools. I mean, it's 100% funded by the parents and the students. They get zero funding from the schools.
Is there, excuse me, is there a distinction, Mr. Law Director, between funded by the schools and sponsored by the schools?
Because I think if it's funded by the schools, I think that's completely different than what we're talking about here. That correct statement?
We have to do our own funding for anything that we do outside of the uniforms that they wear, we pay their athletic fees, and so many things.
Needs to be up there.
Please.
The school provides the athletes with the transportation to the events for the cheer program with their uniforms, the students pay athletic fees for that. But as far as anything else that goes for that, that is all raised by the parents and the students. So, there's no additional funding for that. We are under, green giving is where our money is paid into, and they disperse it for us. But we are not, the school does not hand us any other funding for that.
So, Mr. Law Director, given that...
I think, my understanding, and Mr. Law Director, if I'm wrong, my, the distinguishing whether or not it is a school, not funded, but it's right.
It is Xenia High School, but it is the same way with Xenia, it's like all of the
other, like Xenia baseball team, Xenia football team, and those type of things. When you do the extracurricular funding, that funding is done separately. The school provides you with your basis, but anything else you do has to be done on your own.
But you have an auxiliary group, they could also get a thousand?
No.
But because of the providing the transportation, is that...
That's just for, when we're going to the sporting events, like when the girls cheer or anything else, but any other activities that we do as far as, you know, their tumbling or choreography or anything that they do. The same way with the hip-hop team, the hip-hop team is not a sport at the high school. They represent Xenia High School, but they're not given uniforms or transportation. All of that stuff is done.
It's almost like you have two different organizations, you've got the cheerleaders and the hip-hop.
We do, and we do, but they're all under...
That might be a way that you should resubmit.
Maybe you could resubmit.
Well, it's, it's under one guise, under me, and we are under green giving listed as such, so if I separate those, I'm not technically doing exactly how we're listed under them, and I did not want to do that, because that's the way, you know, our situation is. Now, if you wanted to fund it separately and say, this is the way that the school, if you're concerned about the school portion and you want to fund that, and then you want to designate to the hip-hop side, I'm not immune to that either, and that can be tracked through green giving.
So, the hip-hop side, is that completely not a school function?
Not, it's under Xenia High School, because it's Xenia High School students only can participate on it, but it's not a Xenia High School sport.
Then I will amend my motion to give $1,000 to Xenia Cheer and $1,500 to Xenia Hip-Hop.
You need to have time to review this.
So, the hip-hop, just so I'm clear, I mean, if I called Xenia High School today and asked if they have a hip-hop team, what are they going to say?
They're going to say right now that it's, that it is, but it's not a, they don't pay an athletic fee as a sport.
Okay.
It is a, it's a hip-hop program that was set up, it's a beast of its own, but it falls underneath, the cheer and hip-hop program have always been grouped together.
Mr. Law Director, I think this needs study. Yeah, we, honestly, if we want to accomplish that, we'd have to amend this, because it covers, this covers more than just sports, it covers all types of projects or events, so...
That's my understanding of the recommendation.
Right, if another club came in, they'd be capped at $1,000 bucks, but we could, we could award them $1,000 bucks tonight and look at a way to try to accomplish what you're trying to do. We have a motion we have to get through first.
Was it ever seconded?
It hasn't, that's why we have to get through the motion.
But can I speak?
Please.
I would like to table this for right now, and for the public, we have, correct me if I'm wrong, $10,000 available in our community funding.
Up to $10,000.
Okay, in the past, it's always been the city manager's discretion. Now, and I appreciate you giving council the opportunity, but if I understand, there was only three applicants, is this correct? Okay, there was Diamonds and Pearls, there was Xenia High School Cheer and Hip-Hop, and there's citywide cheerleading. So, I'm a little bit, I mean, there was 500, 500, and one was not even considered, I guess, why wasn't citywide cheerleading considered?
I wasn't involved in that decision.
Well, there was a discussion that Law Director and I had, and I don't know if you recall this or not, Mr. Law Director, there was an issue with...
Let's take this part of the conversation offline, please, as it is potentially unpleasant.
Yeah, some financial accountability issues would have particular...
Okay, but, I mean, we have, number three, we have $10,000 available?
Available.
And are you saying that the public really didn't realize this?
I don't think we do a good enough job of marketing this, because we have, and again, the mayor and I, just having come on heels of some discussions with some very, you know, and you saw the Joshua Tree folks here who have expressed an interest, they weren't aware of the program, or they would have applied. So, I think there's some programs like that out there that would be a fantastic piece of the dollars that, you know, really for some folks who could use it, which isn't to say none of these groups need the money, they all do, but that's why the recommendation was to reopen and allow for some of those groups an opportunity to submit. Do you know the rationale why that's capped at $1,000, just offhand? Has it always been that way? I looked for some history, and I couldn't, I couldn't find any detail. I mean, you could amend that to $2,500.
We have to take care of the motion first.
You could amend that program to $2,500 for a school function, and that would allow what you're trying to accomplish.
Before we do all these changes, I think we need to take care of the motion, and then I think I have, I would like to speak before we make more changes.
But if somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, if somebody seconds the motion, we have to vote on that.
Well, we have discussion, and then we can vote to amend.
I want to table, I would like to make a motion to table.
We have to take care of...
We have to take care of the first set of actions first.
Okay, all right.
What is your motion?
I'll make a motion then to amend Section 226.03-J.
Two.
To $2,500.
And?
Line 10, or Paragraph 10, to $2,500.
Paragraph 10.
For a school event and/or function.
Have we thought this through?
And then, what is your remainder of your motion?
To award them the original $2,500 requested.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second for that motion? Counselman Lauterbach. Are you seconding it?
No, I'm laughing, because I told, I told Counselman Cowell I would second it, and I'm not going to go back on my word, but I won't, I mean, I would like to... I would like to table, though, I mean, if I second it, and...
If you do not second it, the motion dies, and then we can vote to table. If you second it, then we'll have a discussion period, and then...
I, I, I'm, thank you for clearing that up. I won't, I won't second it.
Anyone else want to second? Motion dies. Do I have any other motion on this particular item?
No motion, I would just like to talk before we table it.
Well, we need a motion to table first.
Then you can have discussion on it.
Then you can have discussion on it.
Make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion to table this item for this evening. Do I have a second to that motion? Second by Counselman Smith. Any discussion on this question?
Yes.
Counselwoman Mills, thank you.
I want to know how I apply for these funds, because I have five BRAC members that work extremely hard at raising contributions. We have 12 events a year, and we pay for the fishing derby, the egg hunt, three movies, six musics, and downtown Christmas. So, I don't want to take all the money, I just want to know that we don't have to pound on doors, phone calls, beat the streets, and do everything else to try to make sure that we have the money to provide free entertainment with the tax dollars that we are giving away. We do not charge for anything when people come to any BRAC event. So, when we start looking at things with these monies, if BRAC had more funding, we would be able to maybe add more events for the community, such as the X plan suggested earlier. And with BRAC events being free to everyone, I think that is a good way. Not to say that other people do not deserve the right to have some too, that's not what I'm saying, but I would like to see all money that we give out to people be in the form of sponsorship money. Many young people cannot afford to join clubs and groups because they don't have the monies. It would be a wonderful thing if the city money that was taxpayers was only used for a sponsorship-type program that young people who might never have the chance to even try out could try out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or question on the motion to table? Counselman Cowell.
Once again, I would just like to go on the record, this isn't a new program, and I do not disagree that there are other worthwhile programs out there. But on that note, I mean, they've never applied for it, ever. But somehow, everybody else, Diamonds and Pearls, I mean, six, seven times, they've been awarded money. You know, in the past, I mean, last year, if you look, I mean, we've given that money to churches, we gave it to churches last year. So, don't tell me they didn't know this money was out there.
Actually, Counselman, for the record, I believe at the last two years, the end of year, I approached the city manager at the time, asking him if there were monies still available after being visited by the homeless shelters, and we invited him to consider funding them. I don't believe they ever approached us other than a good faith with no expectations approach to us to just come and speak about their service that they're providing.
Either way, they have to go through the application process like anyone else.
Agreed.
I mean, we're just not going to hand them $2,500 without them going through the proper application process and filing by the deadline of June 30th. That's the deadline. I mean, so, I still don't believe that we should, you know, penalize an organization that has tried to do the right things and set up their account through green giving and everything, you know, to get their feet back on the ground. I mean, there's a lot of backstory to the whole Xenia hip-hop program that I'm not going into tonight. But without funding, that program will go away. That, we had those girls in here two months ago, because they've brought national recognition, more so than Diamonds and Pearls that's gotten $7,500, national recognition to this city. They are known all across the United States, believe it or not, they are. So, it's just my personal opinion that we should fund them their original request amount, and then if we want to open it back up and fund other things, I'm okay with that. But as far as Counselman Mills' point of the BRAC items, I mean, we can fund all the music in the park we want, I mean, just like Counselman Lauterbach said, if we don't spend $8.1 million on a city building, then we've got tons of money to fund that kind of stuff. That's, that's reality. And I mean, that building started out at $6 million. You know, it was a million for this building, now it's $2.1 million for this building. I mean, but that's the thing, nobody wants to talk about, nobody wants to bring it up, you know? We have members on this council that didn't want to televise a work session on that, I don't know why. I mean, my feelings aren't a secret, I mean...
All our meetings are open meetings, Counselman.
I understand.
There is no secret.
Yes, sir.
Counselman.
This question's to the city manager, can Robin amend this application to apply as two different organizations then?
I think that's what we've asked them to do some research on.
I do want to make a couple of clarifications. One, just to, Counselman Cowell, the dollars for the facility are capital dollars. Dollars we're talking about here are operating, these are general fund tax dollars. They're two completely different funds for two completely different purposes.
Thank you.
That being said, these dollars, I think this council needs to determine what the intent of this program is. I will be honest, I am not a fan of this program, because I do not feel there has been accountability with this program over the years. Our office and priorers has done next to nothing to ensure that these dollars have been actually spent for the purposes for which they were awarded. I'm not saying that any of the groups that received the money haven't done that, we just simply don't know. And these are tax dollars, and we should be very accountable with those dollars, and my intention this year is to follow up as the code requires, to make sure that the dollars are being spent appropriately. With that, though, I think this council needs to determine what is the intent of this program. Is it, you know, the code speaks a lot to providing programs and projects, I think some of the applications that we've got in recent years are more operating in nature. If that's council's intent, that's fine, just express that so we know how to adjust to that. But I think in general, it's probably time to take a look at these and make some adjustments to some of these guidelines, to get at what the intent of this program is, because I really am not sure what it is. And I advocate allowing some of the other external groups to have access to these funds, because I think there are a lot of people in the community who are struggling, and I think something like, you know, again, Jeremiah Tree just had an impression on me, I think that's a really good cause, that could really benefit from a couple thousand dollars in funding. So, again, I'm not for any one particular one of these or against it, I'm just saying council needs to provide us with some direction of how you want the program to operate, so that we can make adjustments next year, and then certainly fulfill whatever your desires are this year.
How have we advertised this program, or have we?
We put it out on the website, it's on, I think, Channel 5. I think this year, we did do a press release, which are a lot of the normal efforts we take, but it's not enough, clearly, because, you know, you've got a lot of groups that would be eligible for this, and I would think for dollars with this few requirements are attached to this, that we'd have a stack of dozens of applications rather than three.
That's what baffles me, like Jeremiah Tree, I just don't know why they wouldn't have applied.
Right, but again, they indicated us, they just didn't, they didn't...
Mr. Law Director. I do recall the conversation we had on citywide cheerleading, and we can discuss that off the record, there's other issues there, that's why we discussed that. I, like the city manager, have never really supported this program, because I personally, I can, I think I can support it now that it's coming back to council for a vote, but I never supported the whole idea of a free money giveaway with no real accountability, and it's almost like we're making a charitable donation to these different groups, because it was just like a slush fund in a way. I'm not saying there's anything improper that was ever done with the money, but I always thought it should be voted on by council, so I would support it if it's voted on by council. But as far as the citywide cheerleading goes, I'd be happy to discuss that with you, and the city manager would too, I do recall that conversation now. Mr. Vice President.
I'm a little disappointed that this program's not new, so if we wanted to make changes to this, we could have done this before the filing deadlines of these organizations.
Right.
So, I agree with Counselman Cowell, with the exception of the building, but I agree with Counselman Cowell on the fact that these people follow these rules, and if, I would rather not table this, I'd rather move forward with these donations, and then move forward with changing the rules going forward. It's just, these organizations need it, they asked for it, it's disappointing that others can't or didn't know about it. But here's the application in front of us, they've met the deadline, they met the rules that we made public, and I don't know if the $2,500 is the right amount or the $1,000 to meet these rules, but I'd rather see... rather see us make the donations and then do the right thing and change whatever council sees fit, because I do agree it needs to be changed.
Okay. We still have a motion on the table with a second to table this item, ask the city manager and staff to review it for applicability of caps and other issues. And I would suggest, based on the city manager's request of us, that we send him and the other appointed officials our perspective on the scope and uses of this particular funding source for the city as our opinions. And we should seek to do that before, let's give ourselves one week to do that so that they have due time to, should this be tabled, to consider their recommendations and pathway forward for us. Any other discussion on the motion to table?
Can we put a deadline on that?
Motion to table?
If we're going to table it, can we put a deadline on city staff about bringing...
That's what I said, on the, how much of a time on the motion to table? Is it one meeting? Is it two meetings? When do you believe you could come back to us with, provided we give you input? Is this a one city council meeting slip or two?
I would prefer two simply because if we give council sufficient time, which may be a week, you know, in order for us to get the recommendations into your agenda report form and back for the next meeting, we're cutting it pretty close to the deadline. And the finance director is a good point, and I'll defer to law director on Robert's rules on the tabling. Is there a deadline or a timeline requirement on the...
On the tabling?
Yes.
You can set a specific deadline on the tabling.
Because I don't think with the groups, they didn't express any urgent need use of the dollars. So, you know, if you want to go to that second meeting, that would make it easier administratively for us.
I am interested in getting it right. That's my greatest interest.
I am too.
Is that acceptable to you? So...
She said they do have an urgency.
Please, ma'am, very, very brief.
It didn't, excuse me, it didn't ask us to send the application to express an urgent need, but as with everything else, we have got to get this program going. We don't have, we don't have a month. We don't have a month to wait because when you come into this, you have to prepare your athletes, you have to get your choreography done, you have to get your uniforms done, you have to get your competition schedule done, you have to meet their deadlines. So, we are under a very tight timeframe. We're actually two to three months behind, to be honest. We've got people in place, ready to go. I was not aware, you know, if I would have known that we needed, you know, to list it as a priority, I was just trying to follow the deadlines that you had presented to us, and that was making sure we had everything in here by June 30th to hit that deadline. And, you know, in all due respect to you, I mean, I appreciate even being considered for it, but when you bring up the fact of not knowing the urgency, it wasn't asked if it was urgent to us.
Thank you very much.
It is extremely urgent. Thank you.
Could I make a suggestion? Perhaps if council is desirous of wanting to get the money to them, withdraw the motion to table, withdraw the motion, the second to table, you can amend this motion up to $1,000 because that's what the current rules allow, if that's what council desires. You can pass that motion tonight, give $500 to Diamonds and Pearls, which is the amount that the city manager wanted to award them, give $1,000 to them. There's nothing that says you can't come back when this issue comes back to council in two meetings and give them additional money if council determines to amend that schedule.
We could do that.
Nothing prohibiting you.
Okay, once we give them money, we could come back.
You could.
Okay.
I guess I would just ask that they don't have to refile another application.
If we award them $1,000, then if they desired supplemental monies, I believe they would have to submit a supplemental application.
Just copy it and resubmit.
Yeah. On Diamonds and Pearls, I disagree with Councilman Calp. I know that organization, and I think one year, if I remember right, we gave them $7,500, but irregardless, they do a great work in our community. And I don't think, I don't want to muddy the waters, but now that I know we can come back, I don't think $500, I mean, they met, they filed the application, there was one of three that met the deadline, and I think we owe them more than $500. That's just my personal opinion. But anyway, as far as, with the help of the law director, could I make a motion that we award...
Well, first we have to withdraw.
We have to withdraw.
Withdraw the motion to table.
Who made my motion to withdraw, please?
Can I say yes?
Yes, please.
Now, I forgot what I was going to say. I, before we withdraw the motion to table, within that motion or within that time period, do we want to consider opening it up or not? I think that was the other thing. I've heard Councilman Long say and Councilman Calp say, no, they don't want to, but I've not heard the rest of us to see if we want to open up the, extend the filing period for groups...
I thought it was very clear that I wanted it.
I would like to.
Okay.
I'm okay opening it up. I'm just that these applications met the rules we set in place and published.
Okay. I was just not clear on that with all the talk we've had. I wasn't clear on that.
Who made my motion to table, please?
I did.
Councilman Lauterback.
Okay.
Seconded by Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Okay. Per Robert's Rules of Order, all we have to do is have the motion to untable be withdrawn.
Yeah, I would withdraw that.
You are withdrawing the motion to table.
But once he withdraws it, it's moved, so.
Do I have another motion on this item this evening?
I would like to make a motion that we extend the time period, is that now? Extend the time period to allow other groups that may not have been part of the availability to see this information, to file for the funding.
Extend it how long?
Any suggestions? Two, three months, two months? I don't want to drag it out that long.
You're going to need to extend it at least...
Two months where they can do the paperwork.
Well, it's going to be two meetings before we can come back with any amended rules, so it's going to have to...
So, that's why I'm asking.
October 31st, perhaps.
Okay.
Okay, by October the 31st.
Thank you.
I have a motion to reopen the application process with a suspense of the 31st of October. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or question on this motion? Roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Calp.
No.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Do I have any other motion on the subject of this particular item this evening?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we reward Diamonds and Pearls and Xenia Hip Hop teams $1,000 apiece.
I have a motion to award both parties $1,000 apiece.
I second that.
Seconded by Councilman Lauterback. Any discussion on this motion? Councilman Calp.
I would just like, on the Xenia Cheer, you're making it $1,000. I just want to make sure it's worded correctly, that if they want to reapply, somebody here doesn't say, well, we already gave that group $1,000. Are we separating Cheer and Hip Hop?
Is there any provision in our call, and since we are going to reissue the provision, we can word it however we like, but even at that, is there a provision that people could not, could not apply twice in a year?
Could I make a suggestion, a more expedient way to maybe address this issue?
Please.
Is to direct staff to go back and look at amending the code, bring back a recommend, an amendment to the code that allows the school organizations, if you so desire, to receive a higher amount, that'll take care of the issue in perpetuity, if that's council's
That's a good suggestion.
Rather than making an exception this time, because it's going to get pretty confusing.
I guess, though, I, I'm going to be devil's advocate here. You've got a soccer team, you've got a football team, you've got cheerleaders, you've got soccer, you've got basketball, you've got all these other organizations from the school system. School system alone, we could get $10,000 too. How can we choose one over the other? It was my suggestion to divide the two because Mrs. Irvin clearly stated that they were two separate things. One was a school, one was not. So, I would like to leave it at a $1,000 cap for the school, and I would like to see it resubmitted as a hip hop for the possibility of being able to be passed again, and that's why I suggested that for an additional $1,000.
Reason why I'm asking is because she has to determine how those funds are spent. So, you want to talk about muddying the waters, and I also believe that when they do refile, that this council needs to take into consideration, they met the filing deadline originally. As Councilman Long pointed out.
I don't think anybody has a problem with that.
They can refile.
Can we take this as two separate and just deal with it?
Two separate what?
$1,000 towards Xenia Cheer and 1,500 towards the hip hop program.
The problem is, well, if they're two separate programs and two separate entities, yeah, they could each get $1,000. But what she's saying is if they are the same entity.
Okay.
Okay, they're not. So, there's two separate clubs?
They have two different bank accounts.
Are there two separate charters with two, to the different bylaws? How are they, I guess what we really don't understand is how is the group incorporated?
We need this study.
Green Giving listed us when it was transferred. I apologize, but confusion.
Councilman Calp brought it up. We are under a huge reorganization. Everything has been taken, you know, the fundraising things have been changed at the school for reasons that will not be discussed. Green Giving has been the place where our funds have been placed. They listed us as Xenia Cheer and Hip Hop, one, because I am now the coach of both. That's the way it's listed, but they are two separate entities. But it's listed as such because I applied, because the amount that was on there was $2,500 was the cap. So, it would be my goal, my charge to me, how I would distribute those funds accordingly. But if it becomes an issue here where it's the school only gets a thousand, because it's a school organization, being the cheer, would only get $1,000, then what my request to you would be, would be to take my application, split it, and put your $1,000 under the cheer part and the $1,500 to the hip hop part. I will earmark those as such with Green Giving, which is trackable, which can be reported, and then, you know, all of that can be sent back to you. I believe it says on there, one year from the time that you grant me the funds, I am supposed to account to you with receipts and a report as to where we've spent the money. And I have no problem with that.
For the record, hip hop and cheer aren't connected, other than...
They're under Xenia High School name.
Well, no, other than through Green Giving, okay?
Right.
There's a lot of things under Xenia High School name, but they aren't connected in any way, shape, or form, other than the fact that you're the coach of both.
Right. We do, Xenia Hip Hop does not pay in athletic fees, Xenia Cheer does.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
If I wanted to donate $1,000, me personally, and I wanted to donate to the hip hop, not Xenia Cheer, I wrote a check out to, who would I be writing the check out to?
Green Giving or Green Community Foundation with...
Correct.
With it being listed as Xenia Cheer or Xenia Hip Hop. You would designate where it would go.
But isn't there some legality? Can we move forward until we know exactly, I mean, if that's legal?
You mean as far as, well...
It's just a 501.
It's a 501(c)(3)?
Yeah, they're using Green Giving. Green Giving is where our money goes in because we have to have someplace. I can't put it in a...
They're just using Green Giving as their umbrella to accept donations. A lot of organizations do that so they don't have to, so they don't have to start their own 501(c)(3). They run everything through Green Giving.
I just want to clarify that under the revised code, we're talking about J, K says this body has the authority to amend any of this. We can amend it today. If I want to give $2,500, we can amend it. So, whichever way we think is clear, it's the city council's discretion to make exceptions to these guidelines.
That's fine. So, go ahead, if you want to make it, if you want to make it $2,500 donation tonight, you can do that, and then we can go back and rework this whole thing.
I thought what we were doing, we wanted to award something tonight, and so that would be the $1,000, which would give you time to really check into...
Study this.
Yeah, study it, and then, then come back and we'll award more.
I think Councilman Long just set the record straight.
Well, for the record, then I will not be supportive of that. I want study on this.
But I'm just saying that the reason why I made that motion for $1,000 is that this, the code allows us to come back and award them additional $1,500 and tomorrow, if we care to do that, at our discretion.
Correct.
The motion on table right now is second, $1,000 of each, that meets this code. Gives you guys an opportunity to look at it. But it'd be my hope that we can come back fairly quickly and close the gap with the other $1,500 for this cheer group who desperately represents our city extremely well throughout the state and throughout this country.
And I do agree with Councilman Calp. That's why I've tried to separate the two constantly to make it very clear that they're two individual organizations.
It's confusing for everyone, and I appreciate the discussion on it. It's not an easy process to hang up a second moment. So, I mean, I completely respect what you're coming from.
President?
Yes.
I think I'd like to put it back in the hands of the city manager.
I would just like the record to reflect before, for a change, I'm recommending spending less than council.
So, would you entertain such a motion? I'm not letting him make the decision.
I make a motion, we give it all to the city manager.
Well, I make a motion that we go ahead and vote. From what I understand, the motion states that $1,000 goes to each organization as of today, as of now.
Any other discussion on that motion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Calp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to do?
You're out of time, Mr. City Manager.
Apologize for doing diligence. Just one last reminder, as we indicated earlier, next Tuesday, the 19th, at 7:00 PM at the Board of Education offices is the joint session. I know that Councilwoman Mills is unable to attend that. I apologize. We could get everybody else, and they wanted to get it done before they got too far into the school year. We will be publishing that agenda, I believe, tomorrow. We have a press release, drug press release will be going out hopefully tomorrow as well. So, we're looking very much forward to that. And it'll be at the Board of Education.
Thank you, and the superintendent for making the arrangements for that.
Our pleasure. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything for the city manager, please? Councilman Calp.
Thank you very much. I have two items. Mr. Scrivens brought up the issues on East Church Street. I've received a couple of calls about East Third Street and property maintenance code issues with rental properties on East Third that need addressed, and I was wondering if code enforcement could take a look at East Third very closely and see what's going on there. And then, also, I noticed today going up Detroit Street that there were several orange pylons out on the sidewalk. I'm assuming Vectren...
That's Vectren's contractor doing...
Is repairing that, but I don't know if anyone's aware, but over the weekend, we had an extremely serious bicycle accident on the sidewalk out there that was not marked. It was gravel. The lady actually hit the gravel, had a skull fracture, was in a coma for a while, still has some serious head injuries due to the fact that those sidewalks were not marked and it was dark, and I think we need to have a discussion with the contractor to, I mean, it was just gravel.
I wasn't aware of that.
On the code violations, do you have any addresses or cross streets or any specifics?
Yeah, I do at home.
You do? Okay, just shoot me an email.
Yeah, I'll get that.
That's all I have. Thank you. Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items this evening, the first of which, I'm asking to reject the bids for the payment kiosk. When we sent the bids out, we had hoped to get a model where the convenience fee would basically pay for the kiosk. We received no such bids. We will continue to look for a better solution from a cost perspective, but we're asking to reject the bids tonight.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to reject the bids?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Calp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried. Second item, scheduled bills, $438,143.76.
Motion to pay our bills, please.
Second, Mr. President.
Moved and seconded by the Vice President, Councilwoman Mills, and Councilman Lauterback, because he wants to finish, and we all do.
Fast my bid.
Any discussion or question on this motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Calp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried. That's all I have this evening.
Anything for the Finance Director this evening, please? Mr. Law Director.
Absolutely nothing here.
Thank you.
Anything for the Law Director this evening, please? I think we added one item to the, two items to the summary of action items. For you?
I think pursuant to the email we sent out, I think the issue in the FOP contracts is taken care of, and the timekeeping is.
Yes, the Assistant Finance Director and I met with Councilman Calp on the timekeeping issue, so we'll wait any further direction from the council on that particular item.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
On the FOP contracts, I need to apologize to the negotiating committee. I misunderstood the contract, and I don't want to muddy the waters anymore and what they are. I thought the 5% that the captains were eligible for was an ongoing, they could get it the second and third year of the contract. That's not true. Once they get the 5% under the Tier One and Tier Two requirements, that's the end of it. So, and two of our captains are already at that higher step. So I thought, I, and I would like to see the 5% eliminated in the future, but that's neither here nor there now. But I thought the 5% was 5% for each year of the contract, and I was wrong, and I need to publicly apologize to our negotiating committee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything for our summary of action items? Reading of communications and discussion. Councilman Lauterback, please.
Just one quick item, and this was in the Xenia Daily Gazette and the Dayton Daily News. Three of our police officers got the Medal of Valor, and that would be Jeff Moore, Mark Majeris, and Officer Brian Atkins. A very high award, and, you know, Xenia has one of the best police and fire in the state of Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Calp.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to, first off, thank the city staff and city engineer and city manager for assisting the We Bucks with some projects of putting the goalpost up and whatnot for the local youth organization to use. It was purchased by the organization, but city staff did assist with the, or the installation of that, so I'd like to thank them for that. And the, also like to thank the staff out at CSU. They are assisting the We Bucks program again this year with a home field for our local football players. It's been a great partnership with the university out there, so I would highly encourage anybody that wants to watch some football this year. They do have an NCAA Division Two program out there. The Xenia We Bucks will be playing out there every weekend also, either on Saturday or Sunday. If it's, if they have a home game out there, it's on Sunday. They've invested in their facility out there with some donations from some private donors, including the We Bucks, to redo their field, take the hump out, re-sod the field, put an irrigation system in. So there's actually a lot of exciting things going on out at CSU with the football program. So those of you that like football, I mean, I encourage people to go out and watch some football games out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that school's back in session on Monday. Drive carefully. I know Xenia Christians, I think in session started yesterday or today? I think today. A lot of open houses tonight, and just be careful.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Mills.
Thank you. I too wanted to congratulate Mark Majeris, Jeff Moore, and Brian Atkins. The incident that they received the Medal of Valor, Valor was armed robbery and kidnapping in July of 2013. And I think it's also worthy to note that the last Medal of Valor, Valor was given 25 years ago. This is not something that comes along every day, so these men really do need to be commended. I also want to remind everyone, Music in the Park, August 17th, Green County Adult Band, beginning at 6:30.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you. I did have the privilege of attending a welcome for the new incoming freshmen at Willbourn Forest University, and the university is still alive and functioning. The police chief and the fire chief were representatives, went out also to kind of inform them of expectations and those kinds of things, and it was really a good meeting, really, really good. I also attended an update for Wright-Patterson Air Force Base. It was a community update, and that was, that's always real interesting. Last month, our church, I neglected to mention it before, but we hosted and housed 93 boys. They were from Indianapolis, and they came looking for a place to stay from, and most of them were from single homes. And it's run by a group called Young Men Incorporated. And, I mean, it was just an excellent time. They slept in the church and then ate and all that for the entire weekend, but a great group of young men, and certainly led by some really caring and very loving adult male, male adults. And so it was, it was just really nice. And they want to come back again. They love being in Xenia. I also spoke to a group of potential leaders in a program at Warner and at Central Middle School, and this was a group of probably about 20, maybe 20 students who are being trained for leadership positions. And so they asked me to come and talk with them and just kind of inspire them, so hopefully that worked well. And then I delivered near, well, probably, I didn't count them, there were so many, but 40, about 40 beautification certificates. How many?
Probably about 10.
Yeah, I know, I drove and drove and drove all over Xenia, donating my gas as I drove. But it's always a pleasure just to see the faces and hear the stories of the people and what those certificates mean to them.
Can I jump on that?
Sure, jump on it.
Anybody can nominate anyone in Xenia. On the website, there's information on how to do that. If there is a house that stands out in your neighborhood or your location, please nominate them, and the mayor will hand deliver it.
Thank you. And then I, yesterday, I attended the staff, the opening day meeting at Xenia High School for all the Xenia teachers and staff members, and it was really an excellent program, didn't you think? And I'm so thrilled to have the superintendent, who was officially named superintendent August 1st, Denny Morrison. But he's got, he is so positive, and as he, as people entered, he shook the hands of everybody he could as they entered that auditorium, and just has a real positive message, and certainly, we need that. And he's really looking to do some things with the city, wants to be a part of the city. And then finally, this evening, I did attend the business after hours, and that was at Brilliant Smiles on North Detroit Street, right near the hospital, the new structure, and that building is unbelievable. So if you have a chance, go in and just look around, and they do, I guess, everything. I ask what all they did, they do everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know this is not an early time for us to comment, but on that act of valor, that was an active shooter. It was a very, very dangerous situation, but for the grace of God and the actions of Mark Majeris, in all likelihood, one or two of those officers would have been shot. They were missed by inches, as far as bullets going into the car seats. This is something that unfortunately doesn't happen here often, but I think it's important that everybody understands how serious this actually was, and how the actions of all the officers, but especially Mark Majeris, clearly probably saved their lives.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President.
Just two, I just want to congratulate, although I'm not sure they're not watching this late, Karen and the group at Four Paws, they broke ground this week on their new addition, a fairly large addition to their, their operations there in Dayton Xenia Road, as they continue to grow in their, their effort to provide service animals to children. Second, if you guys remember, I invited Drew Bradz here. He was the young man that came in and done the Rubik's Cube.
Oh, yeah.
He broke a world record at the, I think it was the national level, last week. He finished the triangle one in like 2.4 seconds or something, and he was doing the regular